Good evening and welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. The following agenda, we will try to keep as closely as possible, but we do sometimes take things out of order. 7:00 PM, community input. 7:05 update regarding the Timbernook program. At 7:30, town administrators report on additional fiscal 21 departmental personnel requests. At 8:00 PM, update concerning Complete Streets project and finalize the committee charge. 8:15 finalized the October 7th, 2019 special town meeting warrant. At 9:00, appointments and resignations. At 9:10, cemetery deeds. 9:15, town administrators report. 9:25, liaison reports. 9:35 minutes and 9:45 adjournment. So, it's our part of the agenda where we invite public community input. Did you want to speak Nancy?
Yeah.
I'm Nancy Pierce. Can you hear me? Is this working? I live at 1152 Westford Street. I'm in a butter to the tower that's proposed for 1110 Westford Street. I'm just going to summarize a statement that I put in the form of a letter to you very, as quickly as I can. I'm asking for the Board of Selectmen to consider restricting the use of the communications tower to not have any commercial service whatsoever to protect us and any future buyers from additional harm that might be caused either health risks or financial loss from having additional radiation frequencies on the tower. I've been told that this is not necessary. We've been told over and over again that this is not necessary because we're protected by the cell tower bylaw. But we have clear evidence in our neighborhood that the cell tower bylaw has holes. There isn't a butter to the Sorley cell tower who objected to being in a butter to that tower within 300 feet of that tower. So, what that tells me is that we're not fully protected even though we're within the 900-foot boundary of the communications tower. I also think that as leaders of the town who have concern for all the citizens, not just the citizens who are protected by public safety responders, that you ought to welcome the chance to keep us from further harm. We've been told that despite whatever our losses or whatever the harm is or the interruption to our peace and quiet, that this is absolutely necessary, that the tower must be there, that it's vital for public safety communications. If that's the case, if it's really just for public safety communications, there wouldn't be any interference if there's a restriction on cell service. But it would be a great relief to us and it would also help us convince potential buyers that the risk is not going to be increased by having that tower there. This all assumes that there is going to be an article on the special town meeting warrant that approves the locations being changed from the four that were named in Article 19 in May 2019. If there isn't, I'm not quite sure exactly what you can do, but I ask that you really try as hard as you can to give us that additional protection. Thank you.
Any further community input? Okay, so we have an update on the Timbernook program. Want to come to the table?
Thank you for inviting us back. We wanted to come. We are planning on starting our program next Tuesday and we were invited back just to give an update, answer any questions. We do have an updated copy of our certificate of insurance because it expired in July, so we have an updated copy for.
Did you run a program this summer? Weren't you going to start in?
No, we were starting this fall.
It was to start this fall and then you were going to come again in March.
Right.
And this is a little more finely detailed proposal than you had the first time.
Yes.
Around.
Yes.
Okay. I think everybody's read the proposal. Did you want to make a little presentation as well?
So, we are part of Minuteman Arc, which is the human services organization. We service people with developmental disabilities from birth through the end of their life. This is one of our programs that does that. We will service both children who are, have disabilities as well as children who do not. We feel that's a very important core component is bringing those two sets of children together. There are camps for children with special needs and camps for children without, but rarely do you see the two together and we feel that's a very important and missing piece. The other thing that sets us apart from other programs, we are not a camp, we are a program and we run year-round, is the ability for unstructured play for children, getting them outside, getting them strong by being able to run and jump and work on their balance by walking over logs and using tools outside, digging in the dirt to strengthen their hands for handwriting, all those things that many of us did as children that children are not doing today. Getting children outside and playing is a very hot topic right now in education and in child development. You've probably seen some of it. There was an article in the Globe recently about it and we want to bring this program to our community, to Carlisle and the greater surrounding communities for the benefit of all our children. And another very important component of our program is teaching the parents. A lot of parents have a lot of fear of their children and what they're able to do and whether they're going to be safe. We used to go play outside on the street and came in when it became dark. That is not always the situation in all communities. This is a way to get children outside, still provide them with a safe environment, stand back, let the children learn to resolve their own conflicts, let them learn to build and use their imaginations, but do it in a way that's safe because unfortunately many times we can't just turn our kids out on the streets anymore.
There has been some publications and talks since the last time we met about this happening and there is a really good buzz about it. We have about 70 families on our mailing list, interested parties, combination of parents, parents that want to volunteer or professionals that want to work with us. We do have a group that is ready to begin per our discussion for the September session. It would be a parent-child group, so our tiny ones program. So, getting started with that.
How many kids will be there?
We have six parents.
We have seven now. Seven children, I believe three are from the town of Carlisle and with a caregiver because this is our younger group. It's 18 months to age four. And so, it'll be seven children. It's not going to quite be seven adults because there's a couple of two children in there, so probably five adults as well as Maggie and I and a volunteer that will be working with us.
And that'll be Tuesday mornings from 10 to 12. And then we would go before and after for setup and breakdown and all that.
Tim, are we still, are we still okay with this being kind of the emergency rain location?
Yeah, yeah, I don't see any, you know, drawback to that.
And we don't actually conduct our program inside. So, if it is really torrentially raining and we can't be outside, we would, if, to be safe, we would aggress into town hall, notify parents and they would pick them up. Our program is completely outdoors. It's a sensory nature program. So, if it's raining, we're going to continue the program. It's when it becomes a safety issue that we need to take shelter and then as soon as the safety issue is over, we would either go back outside or we would call the parents. We don't conduct programs outside.
And your plan is to get this equipment delivered by before Tuesday, this list of things?
Yes, we would like, if we can't get them all up by Tuesday because now we're beginning to run up, you know, into some time crunch, we can start with, you know, without all those pieces in place and continue to add every week, you know, to get the site up to how we would like it to be. Swings are an integral part of our program. The vestibular stimulation that the children receive from swinging is one thing that a lot of kids are now missing and it's a big foundational skill for all your sensory awareness and processing, your self-regulation, your being able to sit and attend in class, you know, it feeds into all of those. I am an occupational therapist. That is my background. I've been working for over 25 years in pediatrics, occupational therapy and this program was developed by an occupational therapist in New Hampshire who was going into schools, consulting with the schools on what they could do to help the children and it got completely backed back to this program.
We do have everything needed to start for this program.
I have to say, I was surprised at some of the lists here because when we had originally talked about it, I didn't get the picture of a lot of physical equipment that you now have in here. Thought it was much more, you know, maybe a couple of ropes that you're going to tie to twigs and branches that you found on the ground and now, you know, now I see storage shed, picnic tables, the bricks, which I, you know, not quite clear what that is, the large wooden spool, I know what that is, but it concerns me that that, where it's going to be in the woods and for how long. And the other thing that concerns me is the language here saying it's a nature program on Carlisle town land specifically Conant Woods, but it sounds like it might be somewhere else or that you think it may be other places as well or did you mean exclusively?
Exclusively.
So, if we could clarify that language before we signed that.
Sure.
I would like to make it crystal clear that it's only Conant.
Sure.
And not just only.
Other places.
Other places.
It may specifically means kind of the same thing, but I find them being changed.
Do you mean other places in Carlisle?
Yeah.
Or yes, no, yeah.
Yeah, well, because it says nature programs on Carlisle town land specifically Conant Woods, but it also, to me that left it open that it could be other places.
I see. At some point, if the program spreads, the program, we might run the same program in another place somewhere else, but we would have to, so it's not exclusively only ever going to be in Carlisle, but we're certainly not spreading out in Carlisle anywhere we don't have your permission to go.
So, but I guess that still leaves me the question with, about other people using the Conant land, if they're on a trail, are they going to run into your program or are you off the trail? Where is your equipment hanging and for how long? Things like that kind of raised a little, little flags for me that I had not considered the last time you were here because I didn't get that same sort of sensation that you were kind of moving in with a lot of equipment.
Yes. The program itself is fairly flexible, so that was kind of, what we started with was the basics and what we needed to discuss. On our, on our follow-up meeting with Mr. Adder, we kind of brought up some other things that we, that would be helpful to the program and help make it easy, easier. And so, we were typing this under the pretense that those had already kind of somewhat been discussed and brought up, but hoping to clarify a little bit more what your reservations and thoughts may be. Open to hear suggestions.
First of all, can you explain, are you going to put out the equipment and then it'll stay there for the duration of your program?
Yes.
Are you thinking they get removed?
Well, and that depends on what equipment we're talking about and again, it's all flexible.
Yeah.
Anything that you don't approve, we're not going to bring out. That is why we do, would like the storage shed because many of the things we can put in the storage shed, so they're not just sitting around out there. Other things we'll bring with us specific to that day. So, we don't use all this equipment every program we run. Each program has a theme. Our first theme is apples and so, we set up a station where kids are washing and learning to cut and beginning to use apples. We bring a couple of kids' carts and they cart the apples around, a couple of baskets, they're carrying them. So, we would just have that equipment. It would be nice if we could always have a tarp. It would be nice if we could have the spool because we use it in a lot of different ways for a table for the kids, to roll, et cetera, to build with, like the bricks that you mentioned. They would stay inside the shed. That would be something that would stay in the shed and we bring it out. One of the programs is the Three Little Pigs. So, the kids get an opportunity to build with twigs, with hay and with stones. So, the bricks are used, that's where the bricks are used. So, not everything is out there all the time. Some of the heavy stuff, it would be nice to be able to put in the shed so that we are not lugging it every time into the woods. Some of the smaller things that we would be bringing.
The shed would be in the woods, it wouldn't be in the parking lot, for instance?
I prefer it to be in the woods just because it's a kind of a trek back there, but it's your land and we're certainly here to work with you.
But the swings are removable.
Yes.
The tarp is something that would be removable. I, as of now, we don't have a spool. Again, we're, we're starting this program with the tiny ones, so I don't think there's anything that couldn't be moved.
They use the least amount of equipment.
Yeah, that would not be removable, at least for this, for a session. It's all about kind of, you know, what's our best-case scenario versus where can we meet in the middle? I, the only thing that I would think that would ideally stay out there are the circle of stumps, which would not be on the trail.
At least those look natural.
Exactly. Well, and that's.
That's why I'm.
Exactly. We want it to look natural.
That is what Timbernook is all about. It's about the natural. It's about getting the kids back in nature. That is our whole push. We don't bring plastic out into the woods. I won't say absolutely none completely, but, you know, we are going and we are collecting, you know, we're going to the thrift shops and we're getting old metal spades and metal buckets and wooden baskets. That, that is our whole thing. We're not about the toys they can play with in their home and in their daycare center and in their school and everywhere else. So.
So, I do remember that, you know, you did mention the picnic tables when you were here last time and the tent.
I wonder if I was not here.
And the tarp and the porta potty. I don't know what they're called, two porta, you know, the two bigger porta potties. But I just have a couple of questions is, you know, one, and this is black and white, but online, these, these are brown and not the blue.
What is it? Well, we're actually right now not even using porta potties. What we have is a green pop-up tent that will come up and down just during that two hours that we're out there and we have a camping porta potty.
Yeah, so that's here too. So, you're not going to be doing both?
No, no.
No, again, this was our kind of full list of everything that could ever possibly benefit our program. Shoot for the moon, they say, right?
I thought you were moving in.
Yeah.
I actually thought the list was a little light.
Yeah, right? Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Hassel. So, as it pertains to the porta potties, it would be something that I think we could hopefully revisit in March as we look for summer programs because then we're looking at those long days, we're looking at larger kids, older kids. And, you know, you guys have been gracious enough to say that if needed, people could use these bathrooms, but obviously in that kind of a scenario, it would be.
I don't have any problem with the porta potties. I think maybe I.
I agree with the color.
I'll give you my, my view in one second, but, you know, just not, not the green or the blue or whatever it was in that, that picture. I think, you know, they have brown ones.
Yes.
And I would say if you're going to have them, make it so that they're lockable so that when they're not there, they're locked.
Okay.
And if you have them, if you could just put your shed right behind them so that we don't have two things.
All right, yes.
But I guess the way, you know, the way I look at this is, you know, we've, we've approved the use of this to test it out.
Yes.
And we can't expect that there's no impact, right, at all, right? It's, it's going to be used, there's going to be things there, it's a part of the program and I think we just see how, see how it goes. Well, I support it and I support these items as long as those porta potties aren't.
Yeah, I don't think it's a matter of not supporting. There's a lot of detail in this, this documentation here and, you know, when you put in, for the traffic control, that there's a dirt parking lot rarely used by others.
Yes, that wasn't good.
Unfortunately, not true.
Right.
It is used a lot by others and there's some days where it's totally full. So, and I'm not sure how you would do this traffic circle, so, I mean, that's something that I think we would want to monitor during your, excuse me, during your test run.
Right.
And, and then the other thing that I reacted to was I'm not quite sure how far off the path you're going because you were talking about, you know, the stranger, you know, citing a stranger and if somebody's just walking their dog on the path, I mean, I would, this is worse, that would, you know, talk about.
What, what we did was we included into our procedures and policies many of the things that recreational camps need because we want to do best practices. We are not a camp, we can't meet all of those things, but we want to do best practices. We want to make this safe for the children, safe for the town. That is something that is in those regulations that, you know, if there's someone wandering around, you make sure you acknowledge them and make sure that, that's about protecting the children. We're not going to be accosting people walking their dogs or, you know.
That's, I guess that's where I'm, yes.
And these kids will never be left anywhere safe.
Never.
Because there are coyotes back there.
Never, never.
An occasional moose.
And we're really not planning on going super far back either.
No, we take the step back tune-in very seriously, so it's something that we spend a lot of time being trained on, on how to accurately tune in and step in when needed, but making sure we're not popping that kind of adult buzzle to, bubble to affect their experience.
Right. Just one thing I'm thinking about, you know, the, there's some concern in town even though we're not considered a critical area about triple E. And so, I noticed here that you have an evening program that's starting on October 25th, 6 to 9:00 PM. Now, I believe that according to the Board of Health, they're considering issuing something similar to what Concord's doing.
That's for this week.
And so, but, you know, I know as soon as there's a hard frost, that danger should be over and who knows if by October 25th, we've had that or not, but have you thought about that?
We have thought about it. I actually pulled up the latest, let me see, the latest triple E risk today, you know, and so, we are in the moderate. I'm certainly going to be watching this. Again, I don't want to expose children to, you know, something that is going to hurt them. That's not my goal. So, if this moves into higher critical and we feel we need to postpone this until later in the year, we will do that. We will work with you all. If you decide as a town that you don't want us there, we'll be willing to work with that. The one, I was looking at the one in October, we may have to bump it back into November.
Yeah.
Again, the beauty of our program is we go year-round, whether it's snowing, we might have to change the program we plan to run, but we, we run regardless.
Yeah.
So.
And we also have families, about seven families signed up for that already.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, I just have a couple of questions, maybe. So, like the storage shed and the picnic tables, do you have your name on them? Because Tim's going to get 400 phone calls, oh, there's a storage shed. Yeah, and, and, you know, so I think that would be nice, just have some sort of, you know, identifying thing. And then what might be nice is people are going to use the picnic tables, I can tell you that right now, is to have some informational stuff on there, just brochures or whatnot. So, when people go, oh, who's picnic table? You can actually, you know, pick up a brochure. I mean, it might help for advertising, but also too, you know, people just wonder why are these things out here? And, you know, I, I think Carlisle as a whole would probably be very supportive of programs like this. So, I think, you know, I think just putting that information out there is only going to benefit you. I think just a small piece to the mosquito would be very helpful to inform the town that this is what's going on. Right.
Comes out weekly.
Yeah, it's, we've actually been in the mosquito. They did a whole article on us. I'll be happy to.
When was that?
It was, it was about the first meeting, but it ran quite recently though.
I was just going to say, it might be nice, just again, for information, to have a little press release that says, you know, our first program is beginning.
Yeah.
Beginning on September 17th. I mean, well, it's too late to get it in this week.
They'll probably send a photographer out.
Get it in next week.
They probably will.
That would be good.
Follow up with them.
Perfect. And one more thing on the picnic table, what we have right now is not a wood one because what I got was one that folded so that we could stick it in the shed. So, we have one, it'll fold, it'll stick in the shed, you know, maybe again as this program grows, if it does, if it, if it works for everyone, you know, we may look at a wooden one that's permanently out there, but right now what we have is one folding one that will.
But I do love the idea of maybe one of those waterproof little plastic things that you could stick on the shed with little brochures.
Yeah, that would be great.
That goes with the property of, that's a good idea.
Yeah, people will be interested.
Exactly.
And Tim will get calls, what's Timbernook?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we have that type of town. People call about bottles on the streets.
Yes.
I mean, really, in the police block, look, bottle on the street. Then the bottle disappeared like an hour later.
And you do see kids outside here. I mean, it is a great town, I think, for the program itself, so.
I think it's fantastic.
I'm very supportive. It's a great idea. One other thing I want to mention, just as a, as the Board of Selectmen liaison to the bow hunting deer committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, we do have, as one of the parcels that we are allowing bow hunters to hunt on, is the Conant land.
Yes.
And so, I can share with you the specific map of the Conant land and where those parcels are. There's a significant setback from the trails themselves and we're very confident it's a safe activity and trail use can continue as usual, but if you were thinking of actually bushwhacking seriously into the woods, then you'd want to know.
I guess that was one of the other questions because you did talk about brush clearing?
Yes.
And again, it's like.
Well, yeah, and so, what that means is there's areas that have a lot of limbs down and some fallen trees and where we put our, the stumps that we sit around in a circle on, that area would be nice just to pull those off to the side. That's, that's what we're looking at.
That's what you mean by brush.
That's what we mean.
You're not going to be going with, yeah, all right. I just, again, it's, you know, this.
Yeah.
Exactly.
As I said, when, when you did the first presentation, it seemed to be very, very little disruption and then suddenly I'm reading this and it just seemed like there was a lot more going on, on the property in terms of changing the nature of the property itself.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
I'll send you that information. It starts October 5th.
Okay.
I can just use this email here, right?
So, which ones of these?
Okay. I'm done.
So, of this schedule, which ones have you are, will be happening before you come back again? Because it's not until March we come back, right?
Correct.
So, you're going all the way through the February 28th one?
Yes.
Yep.
And the one, we had two listed on there. I don't know if you have the older one or if you have the newer one, but we were going to, we advertised for Friday for a four to seven-year-old because a couple of the schools don't have.
On the 28th?
Yeah, and.
This is 7/12.
Not on the October one, on the.
In February?
In February.
In September. No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, so there's a Friday, Friday's 9 to 12.
Four to seven.
Right, that one we had no one sign up for, so that one is, is not going.
Two night programs on the time.
Yes.
The second one, I think.
The second one.
The second one, cancel. Oh, the one that says canceled.
Yes.
You're looking at an old thing.
I'm looking at an old one.
Yeah, look at that, look at the.
The new one.
So, we would, hopefully, ideally be running that tiny ones all the way through March. You know, some of this is about growing word of mouth and growing the program. What we do know is that we have the five-week tiny one enrolled, locked loaded, ready to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one and the Friday night one.
If all these fill up, you've got it all scheduled out all the way through the end of February.
It wouldn't be outside of that realm, but it could be less depending on sign up.
Right, right, okay.
Do we need a motion to have Tim sign this? Tim, do you feel, can you just do this?
Unless you want to do the chair.
No, no. I haven't had you do it.
Do we need a motion or do we?
That's what I was asking, is if, do we even need a motion? You have our support, you certainly have our support to sign that.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you very much.
You guys, oh, there were just the, we were wondering, I guess it's not going to be applicable for this session, but down the road, I suppose we could discuss that in March. Do you guys have, I guess we're looking for like a four-wheeler or any sort of man or woman that does maintenance here that would have like a vehicle that?
Do you all ever take any kind of vehicle back in the woods?
Do you have anything like that?[1791.23]
Try, try the police department.
Or the D.P.W.
They have a...
And then...
The Trails Committee has some.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Trails, the Trails Committee.
Yeah, like if we do have the school, getting the school out.
We can, we can work with D.P.W. on that.
The final question being regarding fires and if there are ever fires out there for, specifically for night programs that would be in the cold, especially if we did it in November, what the possibility would be for bringing a portable, um, ring, fire ring bowl out there in order for, for the heat, for the...
Fire chief, no.
Yeah. With the permit for the fire department that that would, okay.
Yeah, just let them know when and where you're going to be.
Okay, they'll give you a permit.
They could probably just spray it from there.
That never got out of control.
You know, I come with some hot dogs. But so, yeah, you'll, you'll work with them, with Gary to get, help them get the stuff out there.
Yeah, yeah. Whenever you need a vehicle, we'll just work with them.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate, we're very excited about this program.
Sounds like fun, yeah.
Very happy and appreciative that you all are allowing us to kick it off.
And it's, it's, I mean, porta potty is great, but when I was doing it, we had a shovel.
Yeah, I know. Just a bucket. Just a bucket, really.
Awesome. All right, thank you all so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your time.
I was just saying thank you.
Yeah.
It's good to hear some Carlisle folks doing it.
Yes, yeah, that's very good because we could have run into some slack otherwise, I'm afraid. Town administrator, additional, do we have any additional information on any of those?
We do not this evening. Um, both the Board of Health and the Planning Board said they would have some additional information in time for the meeting on the 24th. They still intend to provide the board with additional information in the hopes that you would agree to pass their requests on the Personnel Board. Personnel Board met last Thursday, had met with them, presented the request that you did, uh, submit to them, and, uh, they, you know, have started working on those. They've got a meeting, a second meeting set up on the 26th. They're going to hear from the police chief and council on aging that night. So they're, they understand the goal is to get through this, uh, you know, by October 15th, so they're going to meet until they, you know, accomplish that goal. However, I thought, I, we did put this on the agenda hoping we'd have that additional information on those other two requests that were not approved, uh, but we, we didn't get anything in time, but they, they'd like to still present that information, you know, in the hopes that we would approve sending it on to the Personnel Board. But I think we'll be in good shape for the beginning of the budget process if they keep meeting every couple of weeks and kind of...
Yeah, and this is an easier, hopefully easier time of year for them to get their quorum than when we were doing it later in the year when there's holidays and big, and travel and...
And it'll help FinCon because they'll, this will happen at the beginning of the process rather than a limited hour.
Ecstatic about the possibility that they're going to have this information.
Right, right. So we don't really actually have any additional requests to talk about tonight.
Okay.
We will get more information, we're told, from both Planning and Board of Health for the next, the next meeting.
All right. Um, the update about the complete streets, I thought we had finished that, but, uh, I guess we didn't.
Yeah, there's a little bit missing.
There was missing, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have the voting numbers.
Doesn't, um, but aside from that, I didn't, were there any changes with it?
Well, it did in the packet one.
Oh, did, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the one that was on...
Didn't copy double-sided?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's probably...
Since I never read that, I...
Okay, not in here in the hard copy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have a couple comments, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I think this is great. Um, there are just two things in here that I can make it, um, uh, so that it, it kind of expires, and I'm wondering if we want to write it a little bit more open so it can be an ongoing charter.
Mm-hmm.
And so number one, I'm wondering if it, you know, if it should say, you know, implement approved projects, uh, including the complete streets project so that if other projects come up, we don't have to revisit us and add in other...
Because there is additional funding going to be available.
Right, and so that, that just keeps, just keeping that a little bit more open so it can be ongoing.
So you say, I'm sorry, what was your wording?
Implement, uh, approved projects.
Yeah.
You know, for instance, the complete streets project.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other one was down in the last paragraph on the first page, um, I think we just say that, uh, they're meant to be appointed by the Board of Selectment for three year terms and we don't...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I just had that in there. Yeah, sorry. I can tell you right now, the current group is not going to stick around for three years. Um, but, uh, some people will, I mean, some people might, but, um, you know, I think we needed to put a, and a timeframe on that. You know, I think one year is too short.
It is.
And two is just weird.
Yeah.
Yeah, three is fine, people design from them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so who, who have you got on the committee?
So we've got quite, quite a strong one.
Good.
So me, well, you know. Um, but David Freeman agreed, um, Lee Storrs agreed, uh, Jan Corneal is on it, um, Annette, Lee, and Kathy Keller, um, both from Historic.
Wait a second, I thought Jan Corneal was a non-voting.
Yeah, she's technically non, non-voting.
Okay, oh, so these three are still, are, okay, when you say technically non-voting?
Well, we haven't, we haven't actually approved this yet, so if you guys want to move people around, um, so the voting members are me, so somebody from the Board of Selectment.
Yes.
And then two, um, residents, citizens at large, and those would be David Freeman and, uh, Lee Storrs.
Oh, and Lee Storrs.
Yeah. Um, and then it's, yeah, Gary Davis, um, Chief Fisher, uh, Chief Soros, or actually Burtzman.
Bert Rubenstein.
Yeah, so Burt's been coming. Um, uh, Tim is on it.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, six.
Going around the table.
Luke, Tim, Gary, Chief, Historic, David, and Lee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are, those are the seven that we currently had as voting. Um, and then, yeah, Jan, Annette, and Kathy.
So master planning, so, oh, yeah, and we have members, but it's really the slots are...
Master, right, exactly.
Master planning, Historic, what, you have two from Historic?
Yeah, so we did that just because they're both, um, they're co-chairs right now, so we probably only need one from Historic, um, but also too, because this is in the center, the Historic District.
Yeah.
You know, that's why we felt, you know, make sure we get the input. But the, but the idea was that, you know, since they're co-chairs, they're both obviously more than welcome to come. And they've actually both been at all the meetings, right?
Yeah.
But we want to make sure Historic is represented, so.
Okay.
And then, you know, what we might want to do down the road is get somebody from Planning, um, but, you know, David kind of fills those shoes incredibly well right now.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Um, so that was the only other thing, was that, you know, maybe we should have a Planning Board member. And I think ultimately, you know, one of the two citizens at large, right, we could always have it just be somebody that's on the Planning Board, um, but, yeah.
It's a great list.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree.
It's a, it's a good team.
So do we need to have this come back again or couldn't we just vote this with the amendments?
Yeah, we can, I think we can vote it.
You know, this is like the third or fourth time we've looked at it and I don't know that we need to see it again.
Yeah, so this was the major revision, right? So I mean, ultimately, we incorporated just everything into this. We're not, we don't have those three different committees anymore.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm open to a motion.
You want to make a motion, Luke?
The two changes are number one and the, no date.
And no date.
Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah. Um, I move that we approve the traffic and pedestrian safety committee charter, uh, I guess it would be dated.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended at the September 10th, 2019 Board of Selectment meeting.
Second.
And we should put a date on this just so that we know what...
Yes.
Yeah, so September 10th.
Yes.
September 10th.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Another thing done.
Yeah.
Get that off our...
And I will give a...
Well done, Luke, and getting a good committee up and running.
Yeah, well, you twist enough arms, you know.
Yeah.
Or fly enough, yeah.
Yeah.
People don't like to see me blubber. Luke, did you want to?
I think, I'd like to wait until 8:15 to do the town meeting warrant in case there's anybody who wanted to come to see that.
Thank you.
So let's skip back, skip ahead and go to the appointments and resignations. Um, I'm going to need, um, we have two people for which we need to thank them, um, for their service.
I shall not accept Priscilla Stevens.
No. My second.
You're also not wanting, you're not wanting to move?
Yeah, that's right.
You still have to report for the mosquito.
That's right.
I can still do that.
Yeah. You know what, she'll, she'll, you could report, you'll probably report on the school in Concord and, you know?
Yeah.
So...
Want to get some water?
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the letters of resignation as submitted from Priscilla Stevens from the Cleveland Public Library Trust effective August 31st and from Peter Janino from the Planning Board effective September 6th, 2021. And, uh, and thank them for their tremendous service to the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I want to point out to everybody that we didn't accept their resignations with, um, with gratitude for a change.
Right.
Stop doing that.
We, 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 with great reluctance.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint more...
Yeah, verse.
Of 76 Wilt Rock Road to serve on the Carlisle Cultural Council with a current primary on January 30th, 2022.
Second.
So these are what we can do with gratitude, right?
Okay, um, any, any discussion? That's our second member on that committee from the same street must be, must be infectious over there.
Very cultural street. Frank Sargent's on there also.
Yes, okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That, you know, thank you. Cemetery deeds.
Number one?
Seven. Just one.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Allison Becker of 43 Prospect Street at the Green Cemetery, Lot D-111, Grave Three.
Second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't ask for discussion on that one. I don't think we probably have it. I'm assuming there isn't any. Okay. Town administrators' report.
Okay, very good. If I could suggest we go out of order, I know that there's someone here that wants to speak to the request for the one-day beer and wine license.
Okay.
It's number three on the report, if, uh...
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Sure, come on forward. Sorry. That's all right.
I'm representing the, I'm Giovanna Di Nacola and I'm representing the Carlisle Garden Club. Um, we would like to hold a fundraiser on October 12th, Center Park from 3:00 to 5:00. Uh, the goal is to raise money for plantings at the Rotary down, down center. I just want to put a plug in for us. We found out last night, uh, that we were awarded a $1,000 grant from the Massachusetts Federation of Garden Clubs to spend on plantings for the Rotary and, um, that's, uh, that's, you know, contingent on us raising additional funds, so, um, this is a, um, you know, it's the town, uh, the public will be invited, it's from 3:00 to 5:00 as I mentioned, we'll have games for the kids, um, we are asking, Ferns is donating, uh, alcohol, their wine, and also a wine educator, uh, the, the garden club, two members will be, are tips, will be tip certified. Um, and I think that's it. Any questions? Anything left to know?
And just for everybody that's watching, tip certified means?
Um, that, um, that we've read all of the, you know, Massachusetts regulations about serving alcohol and we can serve and we're certified to do that.
You know, when the, you know, the ASH for ID and that, you know, to tell if somebody's getting drunk.
Okay, so, yes, when I take that certification, I'll know that. Haven't done that yet.
Okay.
First, we need your approval.
I see, got it. Got it.
Are you providing the liquor liability insurance certificate or is that coming from Ferns?[1494.56]
Normally we don't.
Oh, well that's what the motion includes.
Yes, I know, but no.
Ferns is not involved in your alcohol.
And that comes usually, yeah, and that comes after the, yeah. They get the license, then they can apply for the.
Right, it's part of the somewhere. Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Right. The post liability insurance.
Yeah. And, well here it is, it hasn't been signed off by the police yet.
Oh, I thought it was.
It was. It didn't really sign one, it was in the electronic.
Okay, all right, as long as you tell me it has, because normally I don't like to see these come to the table unless it's all been signed up before. And, I mean, we have done it contingent on, but it's neater, it'll tidier if we haven't done before. So, that's okay.
It's not this one.
I think I did your desktop folder, I replaced it that way anyway.
Okay.
So it's not our special one.
It's my fault.
And I guess, I guess when you question, check yes for has the approval of the property owner been obtained by giving this license, we're kind of approving. We're also approving.
Well, I guess I was thinking it was Allison Sailor because she's involved with Center Park. Yes, the Center Park Committee, resounding, yes, yes.
I'll call them the owner for this person.
Yes, I would too, but I just wanted to, that's why I'm questioning it.
I move that the board of selectmen grant a one day wine and malt beverages license pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 14, with Carlisle Garden Club, where the event will be held at Center Park on October 12th, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, a rain date of October 13th, subject to the applicant providing appropriate liability insurance certificate.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I hope you can all attend.
Okay. Item number one refers to the town meeting warrant, so we can pass over that. Now, item two, this is a little bit of a technical issue, but because the original telecommunications project was subject to a debt exclusion voted by the town, there's a question as to whether increasing the cost of the project would also be excluded debt for the town. So there's a process by which the town can appeal to the state, because the increase is less than 10% of the original project, that we could include it with the debt exclusion without going back to the town for another vote. So.
Except that we are going back to the town for another vote.
A ballot vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh with another ballot vote.
Because that's the way that the project was voted originally.
Okay.
But this would save the town the additional ballot vote if town meeting votes for the.
Yeah, I think that'd be worthwhile.
What's that? It came up in a conversation with town council, yeah, we were talking about that. Or otherwise we would have voted it and it wouldn't have been, you know, excluded debt, it would have been, yeah, on top of the levy limit. So, we have a suggestive motion there and actually Jen has the form that the entire board must sign to.
I read that whole form.
Oh yeah, it's in the.
I move that the board of selectmen execute Form DE-2 presented by town council this evening, and further vote to submit a request to the Division of Rural Services to increase the amount of the debt exclusion for the Public Safety Communications Project by $225,000 to $3,186,100, provided the town meeting approves this additional debt authorization.
Second.
I'm just checking, is it DE-2 or DE-3?
It's two.
It's two, okay, because somewhere in everything I was reading.
Both forms were in the guidance.
That's why, oh, is that why I'm, okay, that's why I'm just double checking, because I saw both forms and I wanted to be sure we had the right form on there.
It's the DE-2.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Okay, now I'll be circulating for your.
We have, wait, wait, we have to have a vote, we had a.
A motion there.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I just want to be sure we were getting the right form, that's all.
There you go, and everyone has to sign that.
Nathan, could you just repeat for me the numbers, the cost increase, 2 million and what to 300, 180, 3,186?
No, it's not, I'm not giving you, well, you can add it, but the, it said the Public Safety Communications Project by $225,000 to $3,186,100.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
Okay.
Are we supposed to be looking at this award CPS parking lot paving project?
I was just going to bring that up, that's not in my report, but I was going to ask if the board would consider that tonight, I do have the contract for the paving of the CPS parking lot here this evening, and worked with town council on this because obviously there was concern that, you know, if the solar project didn't happen, we wouldn't want to go forward with the paving at that time. So, by awarding the contract at this time, and the motion spells this out, the paving project can only go forward if the board of selectmen issue a notice to proceed to the vendor, which is predicated on the Ameresco project getting full permitting and so forth, so that it can't happen independently. The board would always hold the control of the notice to proceed. And furthermore, if for some reason the Ameresco project, it seems to be going quite well, they're at the planning board now, if for whatever reason that didn't happen, council has put language in the contract, the board could terminate the contract for convenience, which means you could terminate it not for a breach of contract, but for any valid reason, and not pairing it up with the other project is a valid enough reason. So you're not committed to this paving project if the solar project does not happen.
And is there a reason why we need to vote on it tonight?
Well, Sunshine Paving, they've been good enough, I think, to hold their price until next spring, they've been asking, are we going to get a signed contract? So I think in fairness, we could give them a contract, they understand that the rug could get pulled out from under them if the solar project doesn't happen, but I think that, you know, they bid on the project in good faith, they're looking for a contract, something from the town that says, we're going to do this project for $220,000 next spring. So I think.
I can be made comfortable with it, but I'm just a little bit worried about voting on something that's $220,000, it's not on the agenda.
Well, it doesn't have to be this evening, we could do it, you know, at the next meeting as well, which is.
Well, it's on the agenda, it's part of the town administrator's report, we never published.
I didn't, it's not, it wasn't one of the numbered items in my report.
It wasn't one of the numbered items, I see.
I can bring it back next time, it's not that time sensitive, but I think, I did tell the vendor, you know, we would try to get it done so they'd have a contract that they could rely upon.
And it doesn't lock them into that price.
If they're locked into that price, then we're not locked in if the project doesn't happen.
I just wonder, it's kind of like, when do we decide it's okay and when do we decide it's not okay to take something up?
No, it's a big, it's a big item.
We can do it next time, yep.
We can do, I'll put it on next time.
Put it on next time.
Yep.
I'm certainly.
We can wait two weeks.
In two weeks, I'm not voting.
And you can tell them that.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them that it was a technical thing, that we need to have it on agenda.
No, you can blame Nathan.
I don't know. Okay, well, I just wanted to mention, another item not on the report is that.
Oh my God.
Is that we recall that when the board voted that the non-exercise of the right of first refusal last time, David was here, and you voted it, but we didn't have the final language of the notice, we do have that tonight, so you don't have to vote, you can just, you know, review it and sign it if you would. It's the council had to finalize the language, their council had to finalize the language, but it's, it's what was understood.
Are you okay with us signing something when it's not?
Yes, I'm totally fine with that, because we already voted on this. This is like going into the office and signing. So the only difference is the book of pages from what we signed the form. So I don't need to read it then.
Oh, these guys. All right. We'll come back around to your, the special town meeting schedule.
Yeah, when we get, when we.
Yeah, when we've done that.
The discussion. If I could just talk about the schedule for a moment, you have a meeting here then September 24th, a regular selectmen's meeting, the town meeting is Monday, October 7th, you do have a regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th, I'm wondering if you would choose to meet ahead of the town meeting in the cafeteria and cancel the meeting on the 8th, unless we have a lot of business.
Yeah, let's.
Kind of play that by ear for now?
Let's play that by ear, depends upon what we have for business, seems to me.
Because you won't hear from the personnel board until October 22nd, but, so we could see how that agenda's shaping up and then decide whether you can get away with a brief meeting before our meeting. Okay.
Can we even continue our meeting after the special time?
At 11:30?
No, it's not going to be.
We're going to do the complete streets thing after, right?
Yeah, but I mean, the hope is, is complete streets should be, this is going to be a discussion.
Just, yeah, informational.
The information.
All right, that's all ahead in my report.
So what are we saying, we're going to keep the 8th on?
Keep it for now.
Okay, you got to do the second page as well. We'll take a second to finish doing some signing.
I can do this if we're trying to burn some time, I was going to do it during my liaison report.
All right, yeah, we'll do. Yeah. And it may be that nobody will show up for the 8:15 agenda item, but I hate to do it and then if people come and say they missed it. Yes. Okay. All right. So let's do the liaison reports.
$7,000 phone bill for Tim, wow.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, so here's some handouts from the Complete Streets, unofficial official committee working group thing. So we've met, I guess this is, we met a couple of times to discuss the proposals and whatnot, and then it ended up we awarded it to Nitch. They have done some preliminary design drafting of this sort of thing, just to give people a conceptual idea of what it's going to look like. So these were all things that went into the Complete Streets proposal, they were approved by the state, and they will be funded by the state. So, just to give you a quick overview, so if you go to the second slide, so one of the things that we discussed at the committee, and this is going to be something that's going to come to the town, you can see that, like cobbley looking material, so that's all, so the initial idea was, let's try and keep it as historic looking and Carlisle look as we could. So, cobbles were really the material of choice. Problem is it's going to cost $250,000 or something, just for the cobbles. So, it's not going to be possible. One of the things that we did discuss is for the islands, you know, maybe talking to the garden club and seeing if we could do some sort of plantings and whatnot. But, but this is really just to give you everybody an idea of how this is going to work for the traffic calming.
What about concrete pavers that would be kind of more the color of cobbles at least? And they're easier to lay?
Yeah.
And they're just as tough?
Well, exactly, so ultimately what's going to happen is the committee's going to, so we've actually got some other conceptual designs that we've asked Nitch to do, and we're going to present all of this at town meeting, and then we're going to have at least one, but more than two informational sessions where there's going to be a back and forth in discussion with folks in the community. And we're trying to get as many pieces in place as possible, because, you know, there are going to be a million questions or none, right, I mean, that's typically the way it works out. So we're trying to go with as many options as possible, so there's cobbles and stamped concrete, and concrete pavers, and lines, and, you know, painting, you know.
Just as long as it's not solid between us.
Right, well that's, you know, and that's exactly it, so, you know, we even talked about with the islands, you know, are we going to have grass, because Gary said he has no problem mowing them, but also too, could we find some sort of salt resistant little shrub? Or I actually, I drive over in Cambridge every day, and they've got these grasses that I don't know if they're salt resistant or drought tolerant or what, but they look great, you know, and maybe we do something like that, or we get in touch with the garden club and see if they have some ideas. So it's still, you know, the feel of Carlisle still has a lot to be discussed. Ultimately, the other pieces though, you know, the traffic calming bits where, you can see the green where that comes out, you know, that's all going to be grass, and then, you know, you've got the other areas with cobbles and, you know, the black is the sidewalk or the pathway. You know, that's, you know, the siding and the crosswalks, those are things that are not going to be up for discussion, because those are, we've had two engineering firms now confirm this is how it should be designed, these are where the crosswalks should go. So ultimately, you know, when two engineering firms say, hey, this is the way to do it, that's, you know, we feel that's what we should go with. So, yeah, so this is basically what it looks like, the idea is to have an informational session at the, at the special town meeting.
After the special town meeting?
Yeah.
The moderator would agree to, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be after the special town meeting while we have some folks there to discuss this. And, like I said, two public hearings or, you know, back and forth type session. So I guess, yeah, any general questions?
No crosswalk by the library?
So the crosswalk at the library actually moves up, then moves.
Up, is then closer to the rotary?
Closer to the rotary, yes, so the whole thing with crosswalks is line of sight, right? And right now what happens is, you know, people can fly right through that rotary, they're looking to the left to make sure nobody's coming in, and they're already through that rotary before they turn their head and see somebody in that crosswalk. What this is going to do is it's going to force people to actually go into the rotary and force them to go out of the rotary. So, so while they'll be looking to the left, right, if they stay looking to the left, they're going to go up over curbing and, you know, and have problems, you know, so they're going to have to look, slow down, look, and turn their focus back to right where people would be. You know, I'm assuming we'll still have the crossing guard and all of that. And the idea is that, you know, for now, we won't do the raised crosswalks, you know, because those cause logistical problems for Gary and whatnot, but, but there are funds to, you know, if we do decide to do that later on, you know, if this isn't having the desired effect, then, you know, those can always be modified, you know, without, without, you know, overall, without an overall impact on the rest of the project, you know, you just cut it out and build up. You know, the cost will be more because it won't be incorporated into this, but in the grand scheme of things, the engineering firms both felt that this would be enough to slow, to slow traffic, because you're forcing people to actually make that turn out and turn in. Sure.
So, so one question is just, in the initial plans that we saw the first time around, it included the end of Westford Road, and I don't see that in here, is that no longer within the scope?
No, that didn't get funded, right?
I don't think Nitch did that, I think that was.
Well, it's the previous one, it was, it was, it was the end of East Street, it was the rotary, and it was Westford Road.
Right, so, I, yeah.
That's also a terrible, terrible decision.
Right, so that, yeah, so that, I don't believe got funded.
The whole thing?
No, no, the entire project, no, so there was 400 and reply for.
No, we only got, we only got the set amount of money, but it wasn't any particular part of the project that didn't get funded, it was just the whole project wasn't funded.
No, they specified.
I think they funded three out of the four.
Yeah, right.
Projects that were part of the whole.
Yeah, so the.
Specifically, the Westford Road one was not funded, or was it, I thought it was the lights that weren't funded and that's why we had to go.
Yeah, lights definitely weren't funded, I don't remember the Westford Road piece.
Would you mind just checking?
Yeah, yeah, so one of the things that we, you know, and this was kicked around just, very, what's the word I'm looking for? Casually, if you will, by the committee, is, you know, what can we do here that will actually improve traffic? You know, some of the ideas are, you know, making it so you don't have to stop at the top of Westford Road, that just, you just continue through, and you make the folks that want to go down Concord have to stop. But one of the concerns was, you know, when you come out of this, when you come out of the rotary into that, it's kind of blind, but, you know, is there enough space there? So, that would be, I think we discussed that as having a phase two or phase three, because everybody realizes it's an issue, it's just, we don't have the data.
Have you considered no left turn onto Westford Road and make people go through the rotary and then make a right onto Westford Road?
Yeah, that's actually not a bad idea either.
That's what I do every time.
I do that too.
I think a lot of people.
Yeah.
I know, but the thing is, because require that.
Getting off of Westford Road is still as.
No, exactly.
Yeah, the sidelines are horrible, it's scary.
Right, yeah, right.
It's a wall.
Exactly, so the thing is if you put that stop sign, and I think, and I may be misquoting, but I think John said that, Chief Fisher said that, there's significantly more traffic at certain points of the day, you know, obviously in the morning people are going towards the rotary off of Westford Road, and, you know, in the evening people are coming out of the rotary down Westford Road, and that left turn onto Concord Road doesn't happen nearly as often as people go straight.
At the end of the day, yeah.
Right, so, you know, that, so it would definitely improve flow, but ultimately it's the, the real question is, you know, that left turn now onto Concord Street or Concord Road, right? And then, I think coming off of Concord, there's plenty of sight lines, you know.
Yeah, but what's the purpose of restricting that on E Street?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I will check, I'll get back to that in a second, I will check into that, the Westford Road, Westford Street. Is it road or street, Westford Road?
Yeah, I don't understand that either.
Okay, so, E Street, this is part that definitely wasn't funded, but what's going to happen is Gary is going to repave, obviously when this whole project gets completed, Gary's going to use chapter 90 funds to repave it, and he wants to bring the paving down really past E Street. So, one of the issues with E Street is that you get people, they blow out of E Street there, and actually, same sort of thing, they're looking to the left, making sure nobody's coming down Bedford Road, and before you know it, they're at that crosswalk, right? So, the idea is to eliminate those two lousy crosswalks that are there, just get rid of them completely, and then obviously the one from the library moves up into the rotary. So, hopefully, that in and of itself will solve, you know, that lousy crosswalk by the library situation. But, I don't know if folks have noticed, anybody that comes down E Street though, I guess probably does, is that, and wants to take a left, is that, that's not squared off with the street?
Yeah.
So, ultimately what ends up happening is, you know, you get, you get people trying to do a 110 degree swivel head to see, you know, if they can actually turn left, right? So this squares that off, and it does the same sort of thing for the right lane, so Burt, who's on the committee, emphasized that we really need to have two lanes there because you can't have, the turning lane would block everybody that's just trying to get onto Bedford Road, right? So that's why we've got those lines there.
The problem with that is, is that blocks the view of Bedford Road to the cars in that lane, and you can't see.
No, but what happens is the, is the turning car is going to be.
This guy can't see.
Is going to be stopped.
Right, but, okay, so he's going to be stopped before, yeah, so this line is incorrect, he's going to be stopped, that car's going to be stopped before the other one.
How's he going to see what's coming up Bedford Road?
They're going to be staggered. Well, that's just it, so, so he'll have to wait, you know? It really, it ultimately, it impacts the people making the left-hand turn. But then also too, this area, it's not hardscape, it's actually painted.
The white lines.
The white lines, yeah, and the idea is that paint actually deters a lot of people, a significant portion of the people from just cutting across it, so, you know, trucks and stuff can still make that turn, and obviously you're still going to get some people who will cut across the paint, but it'll prevent that just zip. But it'll prevent that just zipping up, looking and going, you know, that rolling stop. It'll actually, you know, people will be a little more inclined to go up and stop at the line, especially if there's a car in front of them, right? If there's a car up at that line, the guy behind isn't going to come zip and buy.
He won't be able to, he won't be able to tell if there's anything coming or not. If there's a panel truck on that left-hand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't tell whether something's coming down Bedford Road. It's hard enough now.
No, right, but the, so that lane is going to be back, right?
But how are they going to see what's coming up Bedford Road?
Well, ultimately, it's going to have to be, Mitch explained why this would work. No, they're, because they do that, they do that all the time. I mean, it's not, you know.
No, I, I do that every day, several times a day. And you can't see.
No, you can't see now, right, right. So, so the idea was that, you know, you straighten out the turns with Bedford Road. You actually make it perpendicular to Bedford Road. You have that paint, ultimately, people are going to cut that, but.
Can we put those clips here?
Well, so this, this isn't anything that's funded yet. So the only reason we're doing this now is really as a test. So there's really no, other than this grass area that's going in here, there isn't anything being spent on this area. Because this part wasn't funded, the pathway was. But this part of the project wasn't, so we want to see if this actually works. And if it does, then that might be a phase two.
We'll have to check the sightlines, but.
Yeah, exactly, well, that's, so that.
I think that's, that's dangerous.
This was in the initial, the initial proposal from.
Yeah, it was, right, and it was a problem then.
And it's the same thing that was in for Westford Road, was the same type of concept.
Same type of concept, yeah.
So the only thing missing here is that we're, because it wasn't funded, which I didn't realize, that because of that, we're just going to do white lines rather than actually change the hardscape.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So my, my one reservation is the loss, I mean, this was a crummy crosswalk here. But if you are walking around the block, for instance, you know, so to speak, and you want to go from here and then go that way onto East Street, you have to go way past on foot. And what I'm worried about is pedestrians are going to start jam blocking.
Yeah, so, right, so that was actually something that was brought up, you know, when we lose that, people have to go all the way up here.
Yeah, and where it is now is terrible because not then, because then you have to cross here, and then this is scary, this curve here skirts even.
No, exactly, so, so then what can actually happen is, you know, this area, because this is all going to be sidewalk now, and this is squared off, and you're not going to have those people just kind of zipping through. You know, we may be able to pop a crosswalk in here. That was just, again, more casual conversation, because people did recognize that, yeah.
Because you're on this side of the street, or you're, you're not on that side because there's no sidewalk over here. So you're on this side and you want to get.
Get over there, yeah.
Get over to here. And so it kind of almost makes sense to have a crosswalk.
Right, exactly, but you have to do something about, because that, you know, the face of that street is crazy wide, you know?
It is.
And that's ultimately where the problem is, because you get, you know, these cars just kind of come whipping through. And, you know, if they're looking left, they're not going to see anybody on crosswalk.
And the other thing that's happened several times at this intersection, are people turning left into East Street, tend to not actually make a true left into the, into this thing, to the, to the lane, they cut across. And I know that people have gotten hit, they have the front end sheared off because people have cut that, you know, made a lazy turn.
Yeah.
So anything you can do to square it off is good. But I'm just concerned again about the pedestrians in that whole mix.
Yeah, exactly, and also too, what happens is, you know, when people stop to make that turn, you know, you get impatient drivers behind driving up on this poor guy's.
Yeah.
Yard, well, I guess it's a pathway now, but, but like, you can see the rut, that, you know, I mean, it's, yeah.
Well, that's a lot of that is trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Who can't make the turn.
Oh, yeah, there's that too, but, yeah, it's also people just go up because they're passing the car turning left because they're being too impatient to wait. But, yeah, it's basically forcing people to make true right-hand turns and left-hand turns, 90-degree turns as opposed to.
Yeah, we're not, we're no longer in wagons. I mean, wagons couldn't make those 90-degree turns, that's why we have those things. But they're terrible in a car because you actually don't have the same visibility.
No.
Really want to be able to see left and right.
I think it's a great job, Luke, I think it kind of respects the historical nature of the town.
Yeah, so I, so, and this, obviously, the committee's been great in all of this. You know, we're, you know, the focus is really on safety, but, yeah, you want to preserve the historical character. We did, we did discuss that poll, the infamous poll. But we're looking at, yeah, it's like seven figures to start burying stuff, yeah. It, it's crazy, Mike.
Hey, you know what? It's historic too, because historically, that's how we used to do, do things.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the hope is that, you know, we'll get the information out there. You know, this is far from complete, haha, no pun intended. And, and then we'll solicit public input, you know, we'll get some feedback and hopefully get some people who will want to, maybe the garden club hopefully, you know, can turn some of those pavers into, into green, you know, either grasses or, the problem is, they're going to get plowed, you know, and they're going to get salt and sand and everything on them, so.
Turn them into green.
Yeah, so I don't know what will actually make it, but.
Yeah, because how, how high is the lip going to be on these little?
Well, it'll be your standard, you know, six-inch, 46-inch curve, I think six-inch, right?
And Greg, you know, I really hate to put more stuff that has to be maintained, so pavers are good because, you know.
Right, yeah, yeah, so, and then signage and all that fun stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
You can use stamped concrete.
Could you send one of those to the mosquito so that he can have it beforehand?
Sure, yeah, I think, I think Helen actually.
I have to explain what I'm writing here.
Yeah, 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 I think Helen actually has it, because Helen, Helen was at our meeting. I can send this to you.
You may, I think, but.
Yeah.
Take the hard copy.
Probably re-perceive better.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, Luke. We're going to move on to our 8:15 agenda item, and then we, if there are any other liaison reports, we'll circle back to those. And the 8:15 item is finalizing the October 7th, 2019 special town meeting warrant.
Okay, you should have the latest version of it, of the special town meeting warrant. We passed that out before the meeting. We are now up to five articles in total. The telecommunication tower being the main purpose for the meeting, but we now have four that fall into the necessary category that, since we're having a town meeting, makes sense to do them now rather than wait until the annual town meeting in the spring. So I can go through those articles with you. Article one is an article that would allow adjustments to the fiscal 2020 operating budget. The only contemplated adjustment is in the area of vocational education. We had, or found out that we had an additional student going to Minuteman Regional High School after town meeting, so the appropriation was not adequate for three students to go to Minuteman, it was enough for two. So we have to increase the vocational educational line item. I think Priscilla is working on the final number, I think it's close to 50, 40 or $50,000 additional that would be needed there. Article two would be accepting a portion of Chapter 41, Section 111F with respect to injured on duty, injured police and firefighters that are injured on duty. And if you talk to Chief Fisher lately, you know, he's had quite a problem with officers injured on duty and having to manage the budget complications that come with that. We do have insurance for those situations, however, when the insurance payments come in, they have to go into the general fund. The police department or whatever department can't take advantage of those funds and pay wages. It comes in as a local receipt. And by adopting this, the town would set up a special indemnity fund where any insurance proceeds for an injured officer would go into that fund, and then the police chief or the fire chief could use it to pay wages and other costs. So it would be a real, a better way to handle it, and it would take some of the pressure off of the budget, because, you know, as I said, if you've talked to the chief, it's been a real, the last year and a half, it hasn't always been the same officers, but he's always had two or three out at a time. So by accepting this portion of the general laws, it would allow the town additional flexibility where that's concerned, so.
So is it, is it pretty much a what goes in comes back out, or is this a fund that could potentially grow? I mean, I'm just wondering, should we cap it in some ways so that we don't have money in this fund that, you know, could have been used for other things in the general?
Well, the only, the only funds going into it are going to be from, you know, proceeds from insurance and so forth. So I think, I'll talk to council, maybe, maybe there's a cap we could impose at town meeting, or I think it'll kind of, you know, seek its own level, because the funds will come in and then will be going out.
So in, in general, the inbound funds always match the outbound funds?
Well, not, not totally, but.
There'd probably be less.
Yeah, yeah, but it'd be 75 or 80%, you know, they'd be less, but it would help rather than coming out of the general fund appropriation.
Yeah, and also too, I would think it would be easier for the chiefs to track it, right? You know, because they could actually see.
Right.
As opposed to saying, oh, how much is in there now? You know, so that if they needed to be creative with how they staffed, you know, because ultimately, that's the thing, you have an officer out, you still, you have to have an officer in the person's place, right? So, yeah, so, I mean, knowing how much is in there, maybe, you know, they could adjust how they, you know, they use a younger person as opposed to a more senior, you know, but I don't know how they have to divvy it if they have to offer a senior first, you know? But anyway, you know, maybe it allows him to.
Can't make this question based upon age, Luke?
No, seniority, seniority. I did not say it's seniority. So that, I don't know how it, I know, I don't know how it works in terms of the police department, you know, if they have to ask the more senior personnel first, you know, because then maybe he can't be as creative. But either way, I think it would help just for him in terms of budgeting, to know how much is there.
Right, okay.
Because otherwise, it looks like he's overspent his budget when he hasn't.
When he has it, right. Right. Articles, articles three, we've been asked to revote a portion of the, the town's revolving funds. When the Attorney General approved the various actions taken at town meeting, that comes back to the town clerk's office. The one item that they, they asked to be corrected was that the revolving fund is now a bylaw, so the bylaw had to be amended to add the new dear revolving fund. And we had, the dear fund was listed and the funding, we had everything but the change to the bylaw adding that new fund. So this is a kind of a cleanup article that town council asked if we would include, include that so that we can fix the revolving fund appropriations for this fiscal year, otherwise we couldn't do it until next fiscal year. So that's, that's in the cleanup category. And Article four is actually another revote of sorts. This is something that came up with, on council's review of the actions the town meeting took regarding funds that were borrowed at the town meeting. And the town clerk is here, she can probably explain this better than I can. There was a question raised whether the borrowing for two CPW capital items passed by the necessary two-thirds majority. And in looking at the tape, maybe, maybe you can pick up the story, Mary, you reviewed the tape of town meeting.
Sure, so basically, what happened is that at town meeting, the moderator, who is extremely careful about everything, just stated that it was a majority vote, rather than saying it was a two-third and so declared. So he declared it a majority, but technically, you need the two-thirds text in there, so that was just omitted, and so this is just to clean that up. The article itself was voted completely, but these particular things, because they're borrowing, need the two-thirds.
And it was just a voice vote?
It was a voice vote, yes.
Yeah.
Those are the.
Was it a unanimous voice vote?
No, he just declared it a majority.
A majority, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So, the first four articles are necessary for one reason or another. Article five would be the Public Safety Communications Project, the authorization to increase appropriation by $225,000. And adding the specific location of 1110 Westford Street to construct the fifth tower. You'll recall that the original vote specified four locations and appropriated 2.91 million for the project. This would increase that by another $225,000 and would add the new location as a specific location that the new tower would be constructed on.
If we were to consider Nancy Pierce's letter and decide to declare this for public safety use only, would that go in here or would it go somewhere else?
I would say that, and we'll check with Wayne at some point, but I would think it's more appropriate to the motion that.
To the motion than into the warrant?
Than the warrant article.
I think you're right, but I just wanted to.
The motions are much more specific, as you recall, and that, you know, the board or anyone could, you know, it could be in the board's motion or anyone at town meeting could amend the motion to include that.
Yeah, well, then we'd have to check what the law says.
They'll need to, yeah. Technically, who owns the tower? I mean, is it us?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay.
If we built it, it would be our tower, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if it still fell under us or if it became public safety, you know, if it's ultimately their tower?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Whose tower is it? Still the town tower.
Is it? Okay, yeah.
On town property.
Yeah.
We can pay this and charge rent.
Wouldn't you charge the?
Charge the police department rent.
I would be very surprised if we were to, I mean, that's why we're trying to build this so that we don't have to pay that tough tower.
I think it's a great idea, Alan. They can use this new volume funding just.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just take it all, that'll be their payment.
Okay.
All right, so those, those are the five articles that are on the draft warrant at this point. I know there are other proposed articles that have been circulated. A couple of them were in your packet, and we have some others.
I think we should talk about those separately.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll just say that I brought up a couple of these things, you know, wondering if, since, after the last couple of town meetings, we have, in fact, Wayne is, more specifically, has, you know, wondered, gee, should we do two town meetings instead of one regularly so that we do our financial stuff in the spring and we do more of the bylaws stuff where people's interest is flagging and they, it's getting late at night, or it might be a second day, and then it's, and maybe we should consider breaking these things up, so. And I was thinking, since we were having a special town meeting in the fall, maybe this would be the time to do, you know, some bylaw things. Well, as it turns out, we are going to do a couple of cleanup things anyway, and I think these are non-controversial, hopefully, and cleanup. And we certainly don't have enough time this time to discuss things, the sort of things that I think would properly be at a fall town meeting where we just start to institute it. Because some of these, you know, are, need a lot of discussion, but I wanted to bring them up now because I think we have to kind of fisher cut bait on this two-town meeting thing or not. And if we decide we, this is a way we want to, direction we might want to go, now would be the time to start working on some of these bylaw changes to get, get them onto a town meeting a year from now.
Yeah, from now.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and so people have started to, you know, bring me suggestions, want us to change the, the term for the town moderator from one year to three years. Another one would be maybe to have an appointed town clerk instead of, and then.
We tried that.
We did. Several years ago, but that was a different time than, you know? The other thing is, and I don't remember who it was that pointed it out to me, but whether it was town council or Wayne, but we have not had a comprehensive review of the town's bylaws in the last 20 years. And maybe now, in the fact that we're doing a new master plan, that maybe now is the time to start looking at some of these things. And thinking about creating a working committee or committee, review committee for the bylaws to start getting us up and running for next year. So that we would do a comprehensive review instead of, you know.
And it was just the guy.
Easy, Neil.
Yeah. The end of my master, the, I mean, that's a complete street.
So, I'm just putting that out there, I thought this was a good time to do it, to get people, the juices flowing, conversation rolling.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, you know, to think about having two town meetings, Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to, you know, to think about having two town meetings, you know, and especially because some of those bylaw things, just they, they kind of really drag out. And, yeah, I mean, it'd be good to have, you know, more focused discussion kind of throughout here. Because also too, it, it seems like what happens is some of the bylaw changes get thrown in at the end, and then they go up at town meeting, nobody knows what the hell you're talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, even the people that present it sometimes get confused. It's like, oh, God, so that, you know, because it just gets too rushed. So if you can just focus on, you know, and that's not to say we won't have any in the spring, but ultimately to focus on some of the more involved ones.
Like the marijuana.
Like the marijuana, that was a mess, you know.
Yeah, that turned out to be a difficult situation. And I think in terms of, you know, also the preparation for the presentations, you know, you're busy doing the budget, we are visiting, thinking about the budget, and then we, you're right, the bylaws kind of are like an afterthought, because we haven't had a chance to focus on them.
Yeah, I think as long as we always have something exciting that's going to draw people into the bylaw meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put the deer in every.
You know, if, sometimes, some time meetings, you know, I've been on the fourth cycle for five years now, sometimes the town meetings go pretty quickly and there really would never be a need for a fall one. So I worry if we say in the fall, it's going to be bylaws, in the spring, it's going to be all budget stuff, then we might end up complicating it. But I think just letting the town know, hey, we're going to always plan on having a special town meeting, and therefore, if we get around to where we're coming up with the warrants for the spring town meeting, and there's just too much on it, we just go through and we say, these things aren't time, you know, I, I would say we don't just put the bylaws there. Obviously, we have to put all the budget stuff there, but, you know, if, if we say, okay, these things, these things aren't time sensitive, let's keep a couple of fun ones that aren't time sensitive, and, and we'll, we'll declare in the spring that we're not going to go three nights. We're going to go ahead and have a second, a special time meeting in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Because you, you always risk not having a quorum if you don't have something to draw people there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, another benefit of a fall town meeting is, you know, we could actually have two rounds of CPA.
That would be a huge benefit, because some of these bigger projects are, and again, some of the, the exigencies of running a town government and doing business in town make it very difficult to plan. You have to have that, it would be really helpful to have like a reboot or a kind of.
Yeah, because we've talked about doing rolling applications, but ultimately, if you can't approve somebody until the spring.
Yeah.
But every once in a while, something comes up. I mean, word property came up, and I guess it's that way, right, that way. Yeah, and there was something else that came up for CPA, but.
Yeah.
But the thing is, if people know, right, they won't try to rush to get something in necessarily for the spring, and they'll say, okay, you know, let's take the time, do it right, and we'll put it in the fall. So, so that's another benefit of.
So with all that said, I, I would be in favor of adding the town moderator in there, because if we don't, it's going to be two years before it's actually implemented, right?
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was sort of in a hurry to do it. But on the other hand.
Attorney general has to approve it, and then it goes on the next ballot, which if it's done in the fall, the next ballot would be next spring.
Right, and so if we don't do it now, then it's going to be the, the.
Odd cycle.
May of 2021 election where he could be three years.
Right. I did have that conversation with Wayne, and I, he was the one that kind of talked me out of rushing to do it, you know. He's, he's willing to, to wait the extra year.
And what's the argument for?
Have his name on it?
And what's the argument? Why go to three years other than it just saves us?
It's the standard.
It's the standard.
And it is easier for the person in the position not to have to run.
Right, no, I understand that part, but I just was, people have asked me. Because you know how it is in town where you're making a change.
And it's one or, one or three is the, what the general laws say. It couldn't be two, it couldn't be.
One or three.
One or three.
Because two is weird.
Yeah. So are there any other articles you'd add?
Not put the, um.
No, I'm just, but if, what I would want to say is that if you think of things that you think we should be considering over this next year, please bring them, so that, you know, people have already actually kind of emailed me. Well, there's also, there's, if you want to put, there's the name of, you know, this elect board.
Changing the name of the board, yeah.
For instance, that, so I've had a number of things kind of trickle in. I think unfortunately, we just don't have the time to do the right job this year, but I'd like to be getting started and, and not necessarily pile them all into the spring, because then I'm afraid we won't, we won't have the, the meeting from hell in the spring.
Four articles and a presentation?
Yeah.
Five, five.
Five articles and a presentation.
The fifth one is to sell.
The reason for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the two-thirds vote one snuck in there, that's the, that's the one that's missing from this, right?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, the one we handed out this evening.
Yes, that's the one that got snuck. Okay. Well.
It's only four here, right?
Right.
Yes.
It's a late breaking.
That's a late, so we need a motion.
I've got a motion in my report.
In the report of the town.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
I move that the warrant for the special town meeting to be held Monday, October seventh, 2019, at seven PM in the Cory auditorium at the Carlisle School, be hereby closed and that it shall include the articles presented this evening by the town administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I thought we had already beaten it to death, but obviously not.
Well, no, I just want to make sure.
Maybe you can beat a little more.
I'm saying that it shall include the articles that's including, should we say, including the, to include the five articles that were presented?
Want to be more specific?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the five articles.
All right, so we'd say.
Accept that amendment.
Let's see. And then it shall include the five articles as presented this evening by the town administrator.
That's correct. The town clerk reminded me of something I do, we did want to point out to you tonight, that the first paragraph, you might have noticed a reference to Benfield Farms. It's the moderator's hope and intention to have a remote session of town meeting coming to you live from Benfield Farms that night. He asked that that be added to the locations of the town meeting. A number of things need to still be worked out before that can happen. So I did want to point out that that's, that's in the, kind of the preamble to the, to the warrant. I talked with town council, and he, he said that if for whatever reason that were not going to happen, it would be permissible to strike that out. For the posted warrant, that we, that was just not happening, but, you know, it's a, I don't know if the clerk has an opinion there, but I think it's, there are some challenges with having a remote meeting.
So should it say, and potentially at Benfield Farms?
Right, a lot is going to depend on some things that are going on in the next couple of days, whether that's, whether that's a viable option.
Right, but so in here, should we say, and potentially at Benfield Farms, or are we okay with it?
I think you could probably leave it the way it is, that we can.
Strike it if we don't need it.
Yeah, that'll be more clear than.
Not supposed to.
But they won't allow any chairs.
That's right, no chairs. All right.
Okay, so we have a motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're done with that. Are there any other liaison, what's, we missed?
We'll be attending the board of health meetings tomorrow night.
Yes. And I want to say also, you'll be attending and looking out for the Benfield things, but the other thing that will be discussed tomorrow night at the Board of Health will be the triple E.
Yes.
And I've gotten a couple of letters inquiring about spraying. I don't think that's going to be our decision, and if it were, I wouldn't make that decision absent a very strong recommendation from the Board of Health anyway. So people should take, who are interested in that particular issue should be attending the Board of Health meetings. That's what I'm trying to say.
And information has been widely distributed.
Yes, and, and meantime, in an abundance of caution, everybody should use common sense. Don't go out, you know, between dusk and dawn. Wear long sleeves, get your deet, take care of yourselves.
Buy bats.
And, and, yes, and make bat houses. Any other liaison?
Yeah, well, just, just a note that we received from Chief Fisher. What was that, probably before the last meeting? Recognizing Sergeant Barnes and Sergeant who?
Oh, yes, I actually brought that up last.
Okay, good, perfect.
But that's okay.
Yeah, no, because I.
Go ahead and do it again.
Yeah, no, because I missed, I missed the end, and all of a sudden, everything broke up. But yeah, just recognizing them for going above and beyond. You know, they, they really stepped up when the department needed it. So I think it was great that, that the chief recognized them, and I think we should, we should recognize them as well. You know, it's kind of what being part of Carlisle is all about, so we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good news.
And you think, nobody else? All right, minutes.
I just have one thing is, is wondering if you could change it. Not to focus on me, but it says, Nathan Brown, I request a low-o, I can't in a meeting by remote participation. Could we do say where I arrived later?
Yes.
But could you just say that, you know, for Nathan Brown, for, for a portion was remote? Just so it doesn't seem like at the very beginning, I got was remote the entire time.
And I have one question on, under the town administrator's report in Monroe Hill. The town has been maintaining a small section of the provide.
Yes, I already gave her that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
I thought it was some old fashioned, some old fashioned words for road.
And listen, I, this is not about the minutes per se, but it's something that's in the minutes, which is about FinCom sending out an FY21 budget letter by September 16th. Is, do we know, is that in progress?
They, they drafted it last night, and it's going out.
Okay, great.
Ready to roll.
And does it have a cutoff on the, when the town warrant will close? Does it have a specific date?
I prob, I believe.
For the annual town, I think we're talking about January, right?
We were, I was just wondering if.
January.
I believe it does, and.
Good.
They're, they're going to send a proposed schedule, I think, to you, Kate?
Yes.
I think that's what Jim Dara said.
Yes, I haven't received it yet, but Jim, they said they were going to send a proposed, but I'm pretty sure it was adhering to this, this whole thing. And in mid-October, they're going to be doing a two-day session of hearings for everybody's budget, right?
So we unfortunately won't get to see that letter before it goes out with those dates.
I, I think we can circulate it, I don't think they'd object to that, yeah.
And then, just for my information, so the personnel board will return the requests they've, that we passed on to them with the relevant information.
Right, whether they recommend a new grade for the ones of new positions and.
And then does that, does that then come back to us?
Yes, it does.
And we, we approve it or not approve it, to be then sent to FinCom to consider?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But not necessarily approving it, we're just forwarding it then on to the finance committee to see the impact on the budget.
If, if you have a recommendation, because we would go with that.
Unless for some reason, we don't approve it.
Right, that's what I'm asking, so we would actually have the authority to say, no, we don't want to send this particular one on.
Yeah, they're already going to add in what we asked them to add in.
If, if you felt that it hadn't been justified, or the, the case hadn't been made to, for a new position, let's say, or something like that, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, not recommend that.
Good. Okay, I need a motion for these minutes.
I move the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, be approved as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's it for agenda.
So I guess the reason why I bring up being able to see the letter is just that, you know, you know, we were, we were kind of vague about, hey, let's have it in January and everything, but when the warrant closes is really something I think that really, we really want to be driving. So it would be good for us to know what that date is and agree to that date before it gets into that letter. Because there's a lot more to, because it's our, it's our job, right?
Yeah.
That's our job, it's not, you know, I'm not going to, you know, stomp on FinCom, but that's our job, not FinCom's job, as to what the schedule is.
Right. Okay. Okay, yoke.
You're all done.
What's that? Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There you go.